Join us from the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, everybody, welcome. We're going to get right into our, I don't know, any motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And then we got action items out of closed session. Got some closed session minutes. I'm guessing a few. January 31st and February 5th. Anybody, anything in there they wish to change? If not, any motion to approve is presented.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yes. Uh, Duri Raj?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Uriah Bitt?
Yes.
And Cuthbert?
Yes.
Moving on, communications, four one, we got a presentation.
Can I get to do that? All right.
Teach it, please.
Make it good. I'll try. I've got this.
Here.
All right. Last, last month, what we did is we went through and had all of our, our goals, strategic plan approved, so we went through the mission, vision, and so forth. And so this time, what I wanted to do, because we have a present put together, so we can go through each of the steps. This document's going to be available to the public, but we wanted to kind of give a full overview of all of our participant and all the documents that are included in the direction that we're going. I think what you're going to see with this is we really have a focus, many of those things are already in progress. It's also important to note that this is going to be a living document, something that, unfortunately, I think, unfortunately, when you see strategic plans, you often see them set in stone. And they, every five years, they revisit and pull down and dust off the finder and don't do much. So some of these are going to be interactive. We, you know, it might be that we accomplish a goal we intend to get accomplished two or three years down the road, that'll afford us an opportunity to then perhaps address other needs of the district. I can't take credit for that right there. I would love to, and we're actually going to work on getting that painted on that wall, so that when you walk in, we're actually going to get canister lights, so that when we come into the building, we're reminded what we're here for every time we meet, whether it's professional development, whether it's board meetings. Down below, you're going to see, and I think, does this have one of those lights?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
The...
On the side?
Right there.
Right there. You're going to see links, and so when people access this, this particular slot or this presentation, they're going to be able to go into the links, because you want to see the supporting documents that are there. When you click on this particular link, it's going to go into the docs of the school improvement plan, it's going to be more in a format that you can read. Our strategic planning process, strategic planning retreat actually began on June 10th of last year. Formal introductions, strategic planning teams and expectations, we went through underlying values and beliefs, missions, state of the district, identifying, discussion of district strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We also went through setting the district's direction, defining the vision, and prioritization exercise. And those that were participated in this, we worked on core components, the values and beliefs, vision, mission, and the values of tomorrow and the beliefs for today. Setting goals, student success. We define, if you've ever participated in this process, or you're part of it, perhaps an organization, a company, a corporation. I think a lot of plans are developed, I know a lot of plans are developed, that they, they never come to fruition. Mission statements are long, too many goals. We have five specific areas that we wanted to address. Student success, staff, finance, culture, and facilities. And you're going to see that there are goals and outcomes aligned at each of those. First, it's the stakeholders that were involved. Together, everyone achieves more. ISB, or excuse me, IASBO, I A S B and the E S C B, or B C S D, Board of Education, Ball Chatham School District, and the community. So we actually had 55 invitees as part of this process. We ended up with about 40, 42 participants in all. Larry Dirks is a director, field director for L O Association of School Boards. There you can see, of course, our board members who participated. This is our school district superintendent, assistant soup. We have the school directors, we have school administrators, we have teachers and staff that are involved in the process as well. Community members, as you can see, we had a very diverse population. We even have the mayor participate. I actually invited several representatives, state representatives, to participate, and they had not, they were busy, so I understand that. And what I wanted to do is, I'll go back, and maybe we'll hit some of the links in a minute. The first one we have are our values and beliefs, and these are different than what they've been in the past. Each student can be a problem solver, critical thinker, and innovator. That's number one. It's about the students, it's not about the adults. And I think too often, we, we don't put that in perspective. This is, we're in the kid business. Believe in high expectations, instruction, and learning should be flexible and differentiated, and a community and family engagement, to the best of our ability, continue, we have a tremendous resource in this community, a very professional community, whether it's engineers, whether it's attorneys, whether it's educators, whether it's politicians for that matter. So we're going to look at engaging them at a higher level. Collaborative teamwork and effective communication leads to success, a safe and welcoming environment. Learning is our priority. In a culture that promotes positive relationships and mutual respect, learning extends beyond the classroom, and we've already begun that process. As you can see, living in Lake County College, we're getting our dual courses in line, we have a great relationship with C A C C, and so we're going to continue down that path to offer more and more opportunities for our students. We believe in strong character and personal integrity, and each person adds value to our organization, whether it's a student, support staff, teacher, administrator, community Our vision is simple. We're going to take that, and we're going to replace that. Our community makes it possible. We have a tremendous amount of resources in our community, and we need to make sure that we access those. Our staff makes it attainable. Without our teachers, our support staff, administrators, directors, Board of Education, it's simply not attainable, so everyone's going to be involved. And our students make it happen. It's that simple. It doesn't have to be a laborious statement, it doesn't have to talk about 21st century learners, and technology, and books, and all the other stuff that gets written out in a variety of mission statements. That's what success looks like for Ball Chatham. Our mission, the Ball Chatham School District, together with the community, develops a unique potential with each student by providing quality, challenging, and engaging opportunities that establish the foundation for lifelong success and positive contributions to society. Goal areas, as we said, are the five to the left. Now, we're going to delve into each one, we'll go back. Like I said, down here on the bottom, we're going to be able to access, when you go into each of these areas, or student success, for example, you'll be able to access our learning plans for each of the schools. And that's the work that was done by our, our teachers, our administrators. And then we're also going to document and track that success. Data's not everything, but it is a good part of what we do. It is a good barometer to measure ourselves. Goals and indicators, what will we do and how will it be measured? Goal area one is student success. All students are positioned to attain individualized success and achievement. Goal one, academics will be of high quality and engaging. And the indicator to achieve that is indicator one A. Goal B is going to implement methodology and strategies that define individualized success. And C, extracurricular opportunities. You know, one of the things that we definitely are known for in this, in this region, is not only our academics, but our extracurriculars. And the research is very clear on that. The more the kids are tied into activities outside of their academics, the more responsive and responsible they are in the academic setting. So we want to make sure that they're offered those opportunities as well. Now, when you go down there, I don't know if you can click on that, can you click on that one below? Does that give you an opportunity to link out there?
Um, no.
So I'm not going to allow it to?
You'd have to exit, exit out of full screen, Betsy, probably.
Well, I'll go back. Yeah, we can do that. For the sake of time, I'll spare you. But what you're going to see in those documents is the progress that we've made over the last year or two, and what our anticipated progress is going to be. So for example, we talked about what is the end, end game when we're looking at student achievement. And if you look at PARC assessment, for example, we have areas of strength, we have areas that we can certainly improve. And so when we originally said, what is our end goal? Not our goal for this year, not our goal for next year, but what are we looking to do? And if you look at it, I would say, if you were to achieve 80% at an 80% level, is that good, bad, or indifferent? 80%? It's good? That's good. I know. Now, next, I'm going to have, come up here, I'm going to have, no, I'm just...
She was going to do it.
I wouldn't do it. Now, but 80% is good, but if you look at PARC scores, it's been a change over the last four years. It really has been a moving target, okay? And so we've had to adjust. We're hoping to get some more consistency. However, it will be said that they're looking at changing something again on the PARC, so it might move again. But that doesn't, what we have to do, we're going to stay in control of what, what we can control, and that is setting our academic path. So, for example, 80% is our end goal, some areas were 40%, some at 60%. And I, and somebody asked me, do you think you could make it that large a jump in four years, can you get 80%? And I said, the goal shouldn't be necessary to get to that in one fell swoop. Yes, we can achieve 80, 80%. We have the students, we have the community, we have the teachers, we have the support staff, and we have those who have direction of where we need to go. And if we set those goals, we will achieve them, there's no doubt about it, no doubt about it. So you're going to see us be able to track that data at any time, and go to those forms, those sheets, and see how we're doing. Number two is staff. All staff will be provided appropriate professional development to include cultural competency, best practice, and social emotional competence. And I think you're going to say, you know, all three of those are very reasonable, particularly if you do any, any research and study on, on how to best affect learning in the classroom. Real focus right now, of course, is social emotional intelligence, making sure, I'm a big laborer, I think it's all said in one simple statement, you have to reach and teach them, is what it comes down to. And so we're going to continue to work on that, and it's going to be evidenced by the professional development activities. And what you're going to see down below is each year, we're going to put, what are the activities that we're doing in district to help support these goals? And that might adjust, you know, we might adjust that during the year, because teachers are involved in that, administration is involved in that, so you're going to be able to access that, see what we're doing throughout the year to meet those goals. Part two of that is all staff will be given support and resources for success, including competitive compensation, appropriate class size, and mentoring. There are school districts that are afraid to put all of that in there, and you can't be afraid to put it all in there, because that's something we need to pursue. We need to make sure that our staff and our teachers are properly compensated, we want to make sure that we're highly competitive, we want to make sure that class sizes are appropriate, and that's something that we've been addressing a little bit of a time. We have hired staff, we have four coaches now, we would love to see that increase. I know the board is in favor of reducing class size, increasing staff to help manage that. And we're going to do the best we can to do that. And that's with classroom teachers as well. So, over the past couple of years, we've really focused on making sure we, through our director of finance, so I've done a wonderful job working with all of our departments and our administrators and teachers to make sure that we're able to be fiscally responsible so that we can devote those dollars towards our teachers, our staff, and our students. And then evidenced, last one was mentoring, and I think that's going to be, going to be key, is just continue to provide assistance for our staff, but also for our students. The more that we can do that, through coaching and those types of things, are going to be very, very supportive. Third goal area is finance, and this is, you know, a lot of people don't think about this, but in school district, we were about, you know, $50 million corporation. When you boil the well of the fat, that's about what we are, right in that neighborhood. We've done a lot of soul searching over the past two, three years in finance and making sure that we're being as efficient and frugal, while still being able to pay attention to all the fund balances, we've been able to provide additional service and resources. I mean, you're going to see tonight one of the things we're brought forward is an adoption of a new language arts curriculum. Just a year and a half ago, we adopted a new math curriculum. And this isn't a time where, you know, some people are not willing to connect to those things, but we are, because we think it's important for our staff to have, and our students to have, and our community to have. Maintain a balanced budget that reflects board identified priorities. You're going to be able to link on to here down the bottom, and it's going to, there's our budget. Now, currently, many of these documents are accessible. Our budget, for example, our audit, we want transparency, we want to show the community that we're being fiscally responsible with the tax dollars. Now, we should be held accountable for that, absolutely. And if we're not, we need to call the task on it. Evidence by balanced budget that reflects priority and allocation of funds to support prioritization of board goals. We need to be able to go back, and that's why it's important that it's in there, it's in books, it's in everything we do, that whatever we're looking to allocate resources needs to be tied into our goal. If it's not tied into our goals, then it shouldn't be a goal. Now, not to say that there's going to be a time where we need to shift something because of emergency or something we need to do, that may happen from time to time, but at the end of the day, we're going to prioritize. Pursue all funding sources while controlling costs. We've gone out, we've accessed quite a few grants, we're doing that, we have a great relationship with our, with our foundation, they're looking to find ways to support us in our pursuit of a lot of our STEM programs that were starting to come to fruition, and support that. Short and long term fiscal planning will identify priorities. Evidence by production of a multi-year prioritization plan of financial planning. That includes a lot, and finance is one of those things where people, you know, they just don't want to get involved, because it's a very complex issue. And we're going to continue to monitor, we're going to continue to pay attention respectfully and, and, and fiscally in terms of being responsible, make sure that we manage those so that we can afford our school, community opportunities, particularly in areas of curriculum Number four is culture, and that is, the district will recognize and appreciate the diverse nature of our students, staff, families, and community members to achieve a sense of ownership and pride by all. The district will aggressively seek broad-based, two-way communication through a variety of methods in order to connect with and engage the community. We're going to have surveys, you're going to see there's a link down below, it's five essentials. We did that just as one of the examples, but there's going to be surveys and information, we're going to be accessing that, analyzing data, and using data to inform not only instruction, but to inform what we're doing. Getting that feedback and responding to it is going to be a very important task of ours, and I mean all of ours, because as we get this information, it's not going to be put in a binder, put on a shelf, it's not going to only be seen by directors, or just teachers, or just administrators or boards, it's going to be seen by everybody, so that we can adjust I must also say, when you do those types of things, it gives you an opportunity to celebrate, because there are a lot of great things that go on. So when you see trends in data, make sure you celebrate those, particularly when they speak well of what you're doing. Facilities, resources will be available and utilized to sustain a healthy and safe environment. Determine and allocate appropriate funding for buildings and grounds. We've already begun that process, and I don't think there was any better time. Unfortunately, with the events that have unfolded in Florida, as you well know, it didn't take such a horrific event to call to task our mission to make sure that our students and staff and community is safe. You know, when I arrived here, one of the glaring things that needed to be addressed was the entrance at C E over at Chatham Mall. And we were able to get that secured, and not with Ken, but the rest of anybody to be around taking care of the situation. But Randy and his team have been phenomenal, and I do want to take just a moment to highlight that, because I don't think, I know I don't, I'm often comforted by the fact that Randy and his team do what they do on a daily basis in our buildings. You don't see what goes on behind the curtain sometimes, but there's a lot of work, and I just, so I want to take that opportunity to thank Randy and his staff for dealing and working through situations such as we've had, although it's not something directly done to us, it affects us all because we're in the business of education, so thank you. And that, your correspondence with parents, our, our political effort to make sure we get information pushed out, the visibility and the cooperation from the Chatham Police Department has been outstanding. So, that all just doesn't happen, that man and his team right there, so outstanding. And then provide necessary tools and resources to maintain assets and infrastructures. We have some newer buildings here, and we have some aging buildings here, and it's a fine balance, because we can have something go wrong in a building, and it costs you 50, 80,000, $100,000, it's probably a hit. So what do you do if you have those dollars allocated to go elsewhere? What do you do? Well, it takes a lot of thinking and sometimes having to talk through those things, but if we are able to get ahead of it and maintain those things, as Mike has done in setting out his plan for this district, I feel pretty, pretty good about the direction we're going in regards to facilities. Again, you're going to be able to access a facility and grounds report. We even have a, a rubric that'll show, based on the scoring rubric, the allocation of staff in buildings, because we want to maintain a certain standard per square footage, making sure that, that our buildings are covered and that they're clean. And I can say with Brian that all of the buildings in this district have received a score of A or B, so that's good. C is not too bad, we don't have any of those, but you want to stay out of the D and F categories, so Mike has done a great job with that. So at the end of the day, you're going to be able to, to link onto this one particular document. What I like about it, particularly in the student academic area, you're going to be able to plug into the prezi that was also done in regards to the direction Jen had presented and her team, our instructional learning team, and it'll actually give you all of the information. So embedded within all of this are going to be links to documents and resources that help us achieve this, so. That is our Ball Chatham School District strategic plan, and we're pretty excited about it. There are things on there that are already being addressed, and we look forward to bright future, so.
How do we access this on the web? Do we have to go to departments, or Board of Education, or is it under curriculum and instruction?
We're going to make it available on the, on the homepage.
Okay. No, not the, not for...
No, we don't want to have to go searching through everything. We do want to make it accessible.
Okay.
You know, that's one of the things we even spoke about, is how can we make our web presence a little bit, there's so much information, there's so much data, you're not always going to be able to get everything at the click of a button, you might have to do a little digging through, but we want to make it as user-friendly and accessible as we can.
Okay, that's great.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Nope, a lot of work went into that. When was the last time we completed one of them, 10 years ago?
It was '07, I think.
Yeah. Good, good plan to have in place, thanks, Bob.
Now, I don't want to be too redundant on this, and I'm not going to make any of my fellow peers stand up with me, but you all may sit, and I will stand, because this is a tremendous amount of work, and I have to tell you, I sweated bullets with Jen and Doug writing the values and belief statement, which is like only an infinitet, just a small, small part of all of this. So, in any event, don't laugh at me, gentlemen, but I'm going to stand up. Okay, I won't do that for those two.
You have to record that, please, that she's...
Yeah, record that.
All right, that was information only, there's no action taken, we appreciate the presentation. Susan, thank you. Okay, moving on, four two, citizens. This is where anybody that has an agenda item they would like to bring to the board, they can do it at this time. Carrie? You have an agenda item you want?
Yes.
Okay. I think you know the...
Yes.
Protocol, name?
Yes. Good evening.
Keep it five minutes.
Five minutes, less than promised. My name is Carrie Cack, and I am a 23-year veteran teacher and community member, and also the B C A president. Tonight and next week, you are going to be discussing staffing for the next year, and the district administrators are already looking at this process. When you, the board, vote on personnel consent items, please keep this in mind. Based on the presentation you just heard and the strategic plan that you've been working on, you have made it a priority to recruit and retain educators. So my question is, what process is being implemented to ensure that this goal is being met, and what process is being used to ensure that this process is fair and consistent? Education is an investment, and the board's role is to ensure that we are getting the quality in exchange for the resources available. So my concern is, is that the processes that are in place have appropriate checks to ensure that staff's time is being utilized in the most effective way, that training and professional development being provided is linked to the needs of students of this district, and how do we ensure that bias is left out of the process of creating the best possible educational environment for the Ball Chatham community? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie. Anybody else? Nobody else wants to?
I think she...
School board, or a Jada item?
Did she want to speak?
This one?
Did she? Yeah. You don't want to?
It's an off-agenda item.
Okay. All right, moving on then, consent agenda items, we got five one to five 12. Anybody wish to pull any of them? Hearing none then, do I have a motion to approve five one to five 12 as presented?
Don't move.
Have a second?
Second.
Yes, Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Excuse me, yes.
Uriah Bitt?
Yes.
Duri Raj?
Yes.
And Cuthbert?
Yes. Personnel consent items, we have six one to six 40. Anybody wish to pull any of them?
I would like to pull six three, six four, and six five.
Okay, anybody else? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve six one, six two, and then six six to six 40 as presented?
Don't move.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Uriah Bitt?
Yes.
Duri Raj?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
And Cuthbert?
Yes. Six three, resignation of G M S guidance counselor.
Okay, I would just like to express... Okay, I would just like to express my appreciation as a board member for, and I believe I speak on behalf of the entire board, to recognize and thank Sandy Marcott for her services to the district as a GMS Guidance Counselor. She's been with the district since 2005, and she's seen a lot of changes over those twelve years and has rolled with the punches. And so I just wanted to thank her for her service and recognize that everyone has, you know, her support has been appreciated by many, not just board members. So, and then the next, next person to, on the resignation list is the resignation of Jessica Viola, who is a GHS Guidance Counselor. And she, I think, has been a wonderful spark in the guidance counseling office in the high school. I can speak about that personally, she's helped my son, who is now in his twenties, and always, you know, having an upbeat attitude on some really, what would otherwise for many people be very disconcerting situations. So, I want to thank Jessica Viola for her services to the, to the district. And the thing about guidance counselors is, you don't always know, nor can you know, some of the difficulties and situations that they address on a daily basis. So, I think we need to bear that in mind when we recognize their accomplishments. Okay, and the next, all these really good people are on the personnel consent agenda items for retirement and resignations, and that is the retirement of Cindy Micus in the Transportation Department. And I am going to buy Jim Lovellis the first box of Kleenex when Cindy leaves.
I've been through about three or four already.
Okay, so you can count on that, Jim, you'll get the first box of Kleenex from me. And she has been an invaluable support to the district and will be missed by everyone, including Jim, maybe most notably Jim. So, in any event, that's all I wanted to say.
Anything else?
So, thank you to all. Okay.
All right, then, we need a motion, we'll do them individually, Betsy?
If you'd like. Probably for the best, yes.
Okay. So, six-three, resignation of GMS Guidance Counselor, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley, yes. Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Six-four, resignation of GHS Guidance Counselor, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Worley, yes. Cutler.
Yes. Six-five, retirement of Administrative Assistant Transportation Director, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley, yes. Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Six-four, resignation of GHS Guidance Counselor, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Six-five, retirement of Administrative Assistant Transportation Director, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley, yes. Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Six-three, resignation of GMS Guidance Counselor.
Okay, I would just like to express my appreciation as a board member for, and I believe I speak on behalf of the entire board, to recognize and thank Sandy Marcott for her services to the district as a GMS Guidance Counselor. She's been with the district since 2005, and she's seen a lot of changes over those twelve years and has rolled with the punches. And so I just wanted to thank her for her service and recognize that everyone has, you know, her support has been appreciated by many, not just board members. So, and then the next, next person to, on the resignation list is the resignation of Jessica Viola, who is a GHS Guidance Counselor. And she, I think, has been a wonderful spark in the guidance counseling office in the high school. I can speak about that personally, she's helped my son, who is now in his twenties, and always, you know, having an upbeat attitude on some really, what would otherwise for many people be very disconcerting situations. So, I want to thank Jessica Viola for her services to the, to the district. And the thing about guidance counselors is, you don't always know, nor can you know, some of the difficulties and situations that they address on a daily basis. So, I think we need to bear that in mind when we recognize their accomplishments. Okay, and the next, all these really good people are on the personnel consent agenda items for retirement and resignations, and that is the retirement of Cindy Micus in the Transportation Department. And I am going to buy Jim Lovellis the first box of Kleenex when Cindy leaves.
I've been through about three or four already.
Okay, so you can count on that, Jim, you'll get the first box of Kleenex from me. And she has been an invaluable support to the district and will be missed by everyone, including Jim, maybe most notably Jim. So, in any event, that's all I wanted to say.
Anything else?
So, thank you to all. Okay.
All right, then, we need a motion, we'll do them individually, Betsy?
If you'd like. Probably for the best, yes.
Okay. So, six-three, resignation of GMS Guidance Counselor, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley, yes. Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Six-four, resignation of GHS Guidance Counselor, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Cutler.
Yes. Six-five, retirement of Administrative Assistant Transportation Director, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yurirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Yurivich.
Yes.
Cutler.
Yes. All right. Moving on, new business, seven-one.
Calendars.
School calendars.
Calendars, plural.
Two years.
Two years.
I know, I was kind of impressed.
Two years. We have a great calendar committee, I need to thank them publicly before I get started. And I have to go in order of my schools. So I have Jody Ancre over at Chapman Elementary, and I have Kelly Marchesa at G.E.S., and I have Monica Lee over at Ball, and Kristy Fletcher over at G.I.S., and Jen Lewis at GMS, and Gary Sneed over at the high school, and Kim Seppich and Betsy Schroeder on our district calendar committee. So, we worked hard to get two years of calendars. We have lots of families that call us every year asking what the dates are of winter break and spring break. I know our teachers like that as well. You're going to see a little adjustment to the winter break period, we've heard lots of feedback that people needed two solid weeks, so we listened to that and made some adjustments, and we have two years before you tonight. The only difference really between the two is Veterans Day, and year one Veterans Day falls on a Sunday, and so we still have a waiver. Dr. Wood spoke with our friend from the veterans, do you want to go ahead and chat?
Yeah, no, you know, we had a great conversation, I tell you what. The gentleman, actually, there was a group from DFW that came in and spoke to us, and had a great conversation. I mean, it was dialogue like you're supposed to have. They came in and had a concern, and expressed why, they were very aware that of our intent to make sure it was to honor the veterans and pay tribute and respect. And it was a matter of competing programs that were out there to do the same thing. So for us, it was a matter of making sure we respect them and hear them out, I think even to a greater degree. The first year, which is going to be this upcoming year, it was not an issue because it's on the weekend. It was the next year that was the issue, because they have a big ceremony. So we talked about ways that we could work together to promote their program, and talked about ways to make sure all of their members were aware, just not family members, because I think it's important that we honor all of our veterans, even if they don't have students that are part of our school and community, to come in and celebrate. So, it was a great, yeah, it was a really good conversation, they were very appreciative, and so were we.
So the first year, we will be in session that Monday after the holiday, because it's legally observed on that Monday, even though all of their celebrations are on Sunday, because it's on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, so we're good there. But in the second year, 1920, we will be observing the Veterans Day holiday, which is different from this year and next year. Totally the difference. And that calendar committee, I tell you what, they are brilliant, it is a well-oiled machine. Kim and Betsy can speak to it, they know the calendar rules inside and out, because there is such specific guidance from S.B. that is very difficult to kind of decipher and make sure you understand, but that team, we need to keep the same people, Carrie, because I love working with them. So, two years of calendar.
Great.
And that's an action, we got to approve that, so...
Zip gates are on there and everything this time, one vote for two years.
So moved.
Yeah, I have a second, miss.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Betsy, please.
Yep, Maddox.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yurivich.
Yes.
Durirash.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Quick question. So then, do we have to approve that Veterans Day waiver?
We are not asking for the waiver.
No, we're not.
We look through that.
Okay, we're good, we're going...
We're going to observe the holiday.
Gotcha. Okay.
No.
Very good. Moving on, seven-two, we got English Language Arts Resource Development.
I really have no presentation, because I gave you a long one in November from our instructional leadership team, and Dr. Wood followed up with today. It's in response to our goal and our strategic plan from student success, our teachers desperately need resources, and I mean desperately, so we're starting this year with K-5. We are ready to move forward, we vetted out 12 different resources, a team of 29 different staff members worked hard on this to come up with what we think is ideal for our teachers. Worked with Charlotte on the finance ed, it's gone through the finance committee, we are good to go. Once we approve this, then I can shift focus to six-twelve E.L.A., because they are ready to get going. And then when they finish, I'm going to be back again with the next content area. You see several science teachers here, I have a feeling it could be them, not committee, but I know they're looking at me. Like, we're ready, right? They're ready. All right, so...
Now, the 29 teachers that helped review the materials, how, were they just, okay, so it was K through five, so it was classroom teachers, were there, is that correct?
Well, there were administrators, classroom teachers, special education teachers, interventionists, instructional coaches, and while that was the core team of leaders, they also then went out and met with their own grade level teams. So really, all teachers, K-5, have seen these resources, have touched them, have played with them a little bit, but it was that core team of 29 that really went through a long and extensive progress, process of several meetings and rehearsals to get to this point.
Well, I'm happy, because we don't, I'm happy to see this. We should not use the Xerox machine for official district resources.
This is authentic text, this is, this is an excellent...
It's the way it should be. So...
So these resources for only for the English Language Arts are STEM courses?
This is just English Language Arts.
Okay.
Now, it is an integrated approach, so there will be science and social studies content taught through these resources, so you are going to see several authentic texts that address STEM concepts or scientific concepts, but there's nothing specific to STEM resources in this.
Did you move already?
I moved.
Second.
Do we guys have any more comments, questions? They're good, we're just kind of, we're spending it for how much, half a million here?
Yeah, but according to the schedule, you should see how much we aren't being charged for.
Yeah, saved a lot of money on this, but...
Okay.
First quote started at 770,000.
Yeah.
But I got down to 394.
All right, ready?
Ready to take the CPA exam?
No. That's my brother. Okay, we're ready, Sarah?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Durirash?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
And Cutler.
Yes. Jen, thank you.
Betsy.
Seven-three, resolution for inter-fund loan, Charlotte.
This is the time of year when I come to the board and ask for your permission to tap into working cash should I need it to meet payroll. In the past, that's fallen anywhere from late March to mid-April, which is why we make this request in February. I, I don't anticipate needing it before late April at the earliest event, because we get early tax dollars mid-May, but I want to be prepared just in case.
And we do pay this back, always?
Yes.
You just shuffle money around, right?
Exactly.
Finance committee, good with it?
Yeah.
Yep, normal practice. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Durirash?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Cutler?
Yes. Six-four, resolution for inter-fund loan, Charlotte.
This is the time of year when I come to the board and ask for your permission to tap into working cash should I need it to meet payroll. In the past, that's fallen anywhere from late March to mid-April, which is why we make this request in February. I, I don't anticipate needing it before late April at the earliest event, because we get early tax dollars mid-May, but I want to be prepared just in case.
And we do pay this back, always?
Yes.
You just shuffle money around, right?
Exactly.
Finance committee, good with it?
Yeah.
Yep, normal practice. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Durirash?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Cutler?
Yes. Six-five, the approval to proceed with advertising contracts for the scoreboard projects at Glenwood High School. Dusty?
So we worked with the Daksonics, and to draw up the contracts, Dr. Wood and I sent
We've still got companies that we're talking to that are still meeting with their people, still contemplating advertising, or at what level they're going to advertise. And once we've secured all of the top two tiers of our advertising, then we will start pursuing some more of the smaller digital ads that we'll also run.
So you only have so many slots, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah, Dusty, there was a question brought up to me about, I guess the village had to do some ordinances or some sort of zoning, doing some checks to see if the height and some dimensions on these scoreboards were going to be in violation of anything at all.
Sure, to everything that I've been told, everything is in the clear and nothing's in violation.
I think that was on there, it was going to be on there February agenda. So, isn't that correct, Phil?
They're having a meeting tonight about it.
Yeah, they're having a meeting tonight about it, exactly. So we can read about it on Thursday, right?
Sure.
Okay, anybody else got any questions for?
I think they were actually going to talk about rewriting some of their ordinances so that it didn't apply to schools and parks is one of the ways that they were going to talk about addressing that as well as through the planning and zoning.
Okay, so nothing to hold up to projects or nothing?
Shouldn't have anything. I just talked to Ryan, I think we both just talked to Ryan within the last week, and didn't seem to be any reservations or concerns from his part that anything was going to be a problem.
Okay. Very good, and there's no more questions. I have a motion and...
It's a move.
I'll second that.
Go ahead and move forward. Betsy, please.
Yurirash?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes. Dusty, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on, we got seven six, the request to seek proposals for some GMS band instruments. Do you know your kids want to make some more noise?
Exactly. Well, thank you for taking this into consideration. It's wonderful to see the many things that we do for all of our students tonight. We've covered academics, we've covered athletics, and now we'd like to cover a little bit of the electives in the area of music. First of all, Dennis Marcott, he is our band director for GIS, GMS, and it's amazing what our kids do. He works with over 300 students, and he is very passionate about music. And for some time, I know he's been wanting to get his hands on more and more instruments, and I've kind of been like, well, now's not the time, just hold off, it's not the time. Well, now's the time. So I'm here to ask for your approval for us to be able to seek proposals for band instruments that will really help our students to sound even better than they already do.
I do have a couple of questions on that. There were two options that were provided, and Dennis, it appeared from the memo that you drafted, you would prefer to have fewer of the higher-quality instruments.
It got to that point, yeah.
You would prefer to have fewer of the, you know, I think it's Yamaha.
Yeah, Yamaha's a good quality.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, Charlotte, I mean, basically Charlotte and you and whomever and Tina will work out the details, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. And maybe a possibility, and I'm saying this as a possibility, there could be a two-step program to updating the band instruments and adding to them. It's a wonderful program, and, you know, the instruments do, they serve their purpose well, plus some. Okay. So really, we're taking it out to bid, but then the, I mean, basically, you all are in agreement with, you know, the numbers are such that you have to reduce the, you know, the total count of the instruments, you're willing to do that?
We feel that if the instrument is of higher quality, it'll end up lasting longer, and so definitely, we would take that in consideration.
And there's some things in there that could possibly, it's like, I don't want to say it's luxury, but something that could add, but might be something that we don't need to get in order so we can maybe get the Yamaha tubas compared to Jupiter tubas.
So are we voting to go to bid, and then you'll bring that back, or how's this working?
Charlotte shared with me some paperwork as far as how it would work, so you would approve, I guess, seeking bids, and then we go out and get the bids, and then we'll come back and go with the best.
So this information's basically what you're aware of currently?
Correct.
And the idea would be to strong-arm a few people?
Yes, and we're working very closely with Charlotte, because like you said, she is the expert in this area.
It's a move.
Second.
I have a second. Betsy, please.
Yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yurivich?
Yes.
Yurirash?
Yes.
And Kopp?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Dennis, thank you. Moving on, we're into Communications. Eight one, what's your board meeting dates? March 6th, we've got Personnel Special Meeting, or the 5th, I'm sorry, the 6th, there's a Abling for dinner, Division Meeting in Clinton, the 2nd Thursday, regular board meeting, and the April regular board meeting. Anybody got any others they need? Information on or want to bring up or? Okay, that's information only. Moving on, eight two, this is where anybody has anything they want to bring before the board on any item, doesn't have to be on the agenda. And if you could just...
Do I have to hit that one?
Yeah, if you would, wouldn't mind, just kind of state your name and...
My name is Karen George. I've been in the district about two years. I have a son at the high school, and my daughter Katie is in eighth grade. I have a question as relates to discipline procedures. We've had some back and forth with Ms. Rutt and my husband, and I just need to get something clear. She's had some problems in some of her classes with loud and disruptive behavior, and we have asked if, if they can't get a hold, the control of the kids, some of these kids be removed from the classroom. Not forever, but get out of my classroom, go to the counselor's office, go to the principal's office. And we've been told that that's not possible. And most recently, we were advised that Senate Bill 100 is what prevents kids from being moved out of the classroom. I studied that bill, and I also studied the state disciplinary procedures, and I also studied the board disciplinary procedures. And I can't find anything in any of that that says the teachers aren't authorized to remove the kids from the classroom and in fact are encouraged to remove the kids from the classroom. So I just want to make sure that I am understanding, or if you can tell me, other than suspensions of more than three days or expulsions, does the Senate Bill 100 have on a day-to-day, these are the procedures you can do at school? If you've got a kid who's being disruptive, you can kick him out of the classroom for the rest of that class period?
Well, I can just speak, I know that Senate Bill 100 has changed some of the parameters of classroom disciplinary procedures, but I don't know the specifics. That'd be something I'd have to follow up with administration.
Like I said, I can't find anything that speaks to a classroom procedure as much as it is an ongoing thing.
And I don't know the specifics, but I can follow up.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any of you?
Yeah.
Well, we've read the Senate Bill 100. The problem we have here tonight is, like, I can't speak for the board, so we typically talk about subjects like this, and then probably Dr. Wood will get back to you.
This would be my question, though, because when I look at the guidelines on your handbook, I'm presuming that that bill is considered in that.
Correct.
Right? So, and in fact, in your disciplinary measures, you've got in here, disciplinary measures may include without limitation, temporary removal from the classroom. So I just need, you guys are all in favor, if somebody's being disruptive, they can be temporarily removed from the classroom.
Well, I don't know all the circumstances, but I could follow up with administration and find out a little bit more, as I don't want to discuss a student discipline matter in public. But I can get it...
I wasn't saying specifics, I'm just trying to make sure that the teachers have that authority to be able to do that.
Sure, there's a broad base of authority that you have in the classroom.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I just don't know the specifics, and I'd have to follow up.
I'm just looking for that broad general instruction that they have, the power to do that.
Sure.
That's what I needed, thank you.
Good, Karen. Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Yeah?
I was going to go back to Carrie, Carrie Caff?
Yes.
Somebody will, or I just want to make sure somebody's going to follow up with her concern that she brought up earlier. Yeah. And you, you understand already that we can't talk tonight about, yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, please.
My name is Jen Grimaldi.
Okay, could I just step up to the podium a minute?
Again, my name is Jen Grimaldi. I am one of the art teachers of the high school. I wanted to make the board aware of the situation concerning my employment with the district. On August 10th, 2017, I was in a district-wide new teacher orientation meeting where an administrator, and actually multiple administrators, continuously made statements about how our families come first to the new 30-plus teachers. This was encouraging, since my family is of utmost importance to me. Shortly thereafter, I was first provided the district calendar, and I panicked. The previous March, my family and I booked a trip to Brazil to visit my husband's family. My husband is from there. Many of the members on his side of the family have been ill, including his father with prostate cancer and his uncle with pancreatic cancer. And the trip may have been one of the last chances for our entire family to get together for Christmas. Besides my immediate family, which consists of my husband, four children, and I, other members were traveling from other parts of the world for the visit. I immediately noticed the conflict with school workdays as soon as I saw the school calendar and notified administration. I was completely transparent and honest with the administration about my family's trip from the beginning. I promptly requested three personal days to cover my absence. My request was denied. When I asked the superintendent if he wanted to see some form of documentation or purchase of these tickets, if he wanted me to stop by the district office, or what I should do, he did not respond to me or give me any options. The only option offered to me in a prior email was to reschedule or cancel my trip. However, I informed him that this was not an option, as we had already spent more than $10,000, which was actually more than $12,000 on just our flights. Once you have a visa for a trip, there is not a lot of room for changing your trip overseas. And at that point, there were no more flights available for six passengers, my husband, our four children, and myself, for the relevant time period. We had spent an additional $5,000 on other forms of transportation and lodging in advance as well. This was all booked and paid for on March 5th and 6th of 2017, well before my employment with the district. Rescheduling the trip was also not an option, as other families were also flying into different parts of Brazil to meet us, some coming all the way from Switzerland. As an alternative, I had offered the principal of my building to take non-paid docked days to cover my time. He later informed me that I was not tenured, therefore, I was not eligible to take non-paid days. I am aware of several in-district teachers who have been permitted to take days next to holidays and not next to holidays, and one very recently, this last month. I was informed that I am also eligible for both personal and non-paid days, and that the superintendent may grant both personal and non-paid days next to a holiday to employees with extenuating circumstances. It should be noted throughout the year, I have been an exemplary employee, attending every required meeting, including first-year teacher meetings, which they require for new teachers within the district, but should really be for first-time teachers. During my employment with the district, all my evaluations were rated proficient and excellent, and also receiving a rating of excellent in student growth. In fact, during my over 14 years of teaching high school, I have always had proficient to excellent evaluations and have never had any disciplinary actions. I also played an integral role in rewriting the school's AP, 2D, and 3D art syllabuses, as the district's curriculum for those classes was no longer accepted by the college board. As a matter of pure coincidence, on December 15th, shortly before my scheduled trip, I became very ill. My students kept asking me why I didn't go home, because I looked terrible. I worked the entire day with a fever and even consulted the nurse in my building, who confirmed I had a fever and offered medication. I took my own, which was in my purse, because I have to be careful of what I take. Immediately after work, I went to Memorial Family Medical Center in Lincoln, where they confirmed I had flu-like symptoms and an eardrum that nearly ruptured. I was given three different prescriptions and was told that if it wasn't the flu, then it was a respiratory infection that was going around, which has been lasting more than a week. I had symptoms for the next three weeks and was still coughing at the fact-finding meeting, which took place on January 10th and 12th. I was informed on February 2nd, which was a personal day, used to close on my house to be closer to this job, of a meeting to take place at the district office on January 5th. I was effectively denied my choice of representation on January 5th in accordance to Article 4 of the collective bargaining agreement, as the administration was not flexible for the time to meet at 3:00 PM as opposed to 12:30. I was forced to leave the building during my class, during which the administration did not find someone to cover my class for the time that I was to be gone at the district office. My seventh-hour class sat for more than 20 minutes without any supervision. I was also not informed in advance that the meeting at the district office was to be considered a disciplinary hearing, also a violation of the CBA. At the meeting on January 5th, the superintendent informed me that the options for me back in August were to resign my position or forego my vacation. At no point was this ultimately made clear. In fact, there was no response to any of my prior inquiries regarding clarification or options. The superintendent then told me that it didn't matter that I was sick or if I had a doctor's note, because I went against what he said and went on my trip anyway. They then told me I was suspended for three days, beginning on February 7th through 9th. In doing so, the administration did not follow progressive disciplinary procedures established by the CBA in Article 4. Also, absolutely no effect was made to engage in discussions to resolve the issue before it reached a degree of seriousness to require further discipline, see CBA Article 4, Section F. In respect to any alleged misconduct, an effort will be made through discussion between the employee and administration to resolve problems before they reach a degree of seriousness to require further discipline. As is written in the disciplinary findings, no specific corrective actions were recommended, most probably because this was a unique situation beyond my control and likely never to come up again. As such, outside the three days of suspension, no other disciplinary actions were outlined at my continued employment with the district, was not in question or even mentioned. When I checked with the secretary on February 6th to see who was covering my classes for February 7th and 9th, she looked at me with a blank stare and asked me what I was talking about. She was never informed nor asked by the district office or the principal to find someone to cover my classes for those three suspended days. The principal was gone that day as well, so he wasn't there to inform her either. On February 14th, I filed a grievance toward the district office, as I believed the treatment of my situation was not just. Not two hours after I filed the grievance, I was notified by email of a post-conference meeting to take place in the principal's office on February 15th. Because all of my evaluations and post-conferences were done at the beginning of December, I asked the principal what this was concerning on two separate occasions, yet he chose not to respond to me. He had originally planned the meeting so that it would be missing instructional time with my students as opposed to during my prep. After pointing this fact out on February 15th, I was summoned at an earlier time during my prep period to speak with the principal. It was clear from the start that this meeting was disciplinary inaction. When I asserted my union rights to have representation present, he attempted to deny my representation by telling me he had no questions and that this was strictly related to evaluations. This was odd, since all my evaluations for the year had already been completed at the time. When I pressured further to the nature of the meeting, his response was continuing employment. I stated that I wanted representation and that I would return. There was no current building representation available at the time. I took a former rep with me, who agreed to accompany me. Upon a return, the principal stated that they were moving in another direction regarding my continued employment. When my representation asked if he had any recommendations regarding any changes in conduct I could implement in the future, he stated he would not offer any until after either I resigned the position or the board was to take action. He never once mentioned or referenced my actual evaluations. As a reminder, all my previous evaluations were proficient and excellent, and my student growth in the classroom was also excellent. growth in the classroom was also excellent. In the comments at the end of each evaluation, there were never any recommendations on changes that should be made within my teaching strategies. They were all glowing comments. It is absolutely clear that the decision not to renew my contract was retaliatory in nature, as the notice requesting a post-conference meeting came two hours under my file. This retaliatory discharge is in violation of the rules and regulations prohibiting unfair labor practices. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer, thank you. Got anything they want to bring for the board? No? Just so you guys know, there has been a grievance on this, so there is, there is investigation going on, so.
I was going to ask, we should go into closed session and discuss, or?
There's no action items on the agenda for tonight, but.
So we haven't voted on it yet?
No.
Well, could we go back into closed session, just to have a, maybe a more detailed, where, you know, the district is and the grievance process? Excuse me? Grievance process?
Sure.
That fact was a not-n可知.
Anybody else? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn, and then is it consensus? Do we want to go into closed session now?
Yeah.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Should we let them know why we're all wearing pink?
You probably have all figured it out. It's a tribute to Carly Pearce, and so this is the first time that the entire board has been together, so that's why we're all wearing pink. But as an aside, I think the gentleman looked really good in pink, and so I would suggest you expand this color in your board group.
I'll try. Good luck. Good luck.
All right, then, do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close post. Good night, everybody. Thanks for your attendance.
Thank you. Could you start this?